Okay, welcome to our meeting this evening. We're gonna have the invocation by Reverend Emmett McCord for Christ's sake Church of Rex. Please stand with me and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. A wonderful eternal and matchless God, we come to you this evening, Lord. Father, to thank you, Father, for what you've already done. Father, for you have brought this county, Lord, through, Father, one of the most significant times, Lord, Father, that we've experienced in modern history, Lord. Father, with the passing, Lord, Father of Major Barney, Lord, Father, you've, Father, raised us up, Father, to see, Father, that tomorrow is not promised. And, Father, that our families are significant, Lord, and, Father, that our surroundings and our community, Lord, Father, are important, Lord. Father, we thank you for the little things, Lord, that our eyes can see now, Lord, that we were closed or, Father, didn't pay attention to, Father, in the past. Father, we thank you, Lord, Father, for, we realize, Lord, that our neighbors are important, Lord, and, Father, our coworkers, Father, our community, Lord. Father, we have so much to be thankful for. And so, Lord, we just give you thanks, Father, for what you're doing in Clayton County. Father, this meeting, Lord, Father, we stand before the leaders that you've placed before us. We ask, Father, that you will bless them, Lord. Increase in them, Lord. And, Father, do all, Father, that needs to be done. And, Father, we just ask all these things in your Son Jesus' name. Let us all say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the March 1st, 2016 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, I would like to have Resolution 2016-43 removed. We're still waiting on a legal description of the property itself. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Forty-three. Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing non, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the approved amendments.
Is there a second? I'll second it, properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's unanimous.
Approval of the February 16, 2016 Regular Business Meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from last meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Edmondson, seconded, it properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have citizens that have signed up to speak before the board. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous and respectful and not use any disparaging remarks when addressing the board.
Dr. Henry Anderson. Good evening, everyone. I'm before all of you to inform you that starting at next public commission meeting on Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, I will start another series of public commenting on problems that I have brought before you to address and solve, which again are crimes, gangs, the unappealing and less than desirable look of certain areas of Clayton County, constant major and blatant violations of the county's codes and ordinances by both commercial and residential properties, and the overall dismal quality of life in Clayton County in certain major areas. However, this time, after you have passed the budget for Clayton County's fiscal year 2016-2017, I will start my series of evaluations on all five of you, both individually and collectively, on your performance to date, on whether or not you as a commission group have advanced and moved Clayton County forward, on an upward positive future is bright trajectory, and better in this county, or whether all five of you as a collective whole are underachieving, underperforming, and doing less than what the citizens of Clayton County expected of you as chairman and commissioners of this county. Senior Executive Commissioner, Mr. Michael Edmondson of Commission District Number Four, presently in your 10th years commissioner. Senior Executive Commissioner and Vice Chairwoman, Mrs. Sana Singleton Gregory, presently in your 10th years commissioner. Executive Commissioner, Ms. Gail Hammick of Commission District Number Two, presently in your eighth years commissioner. Executive Commissioner, Attorney and Judge, Ms. Shayna M. Rooks, presently in your fourth years commissioner. And Chairman, Chief Executive Officer, and Police Chief Emeritus of the entire Clayton County Municipal Metropolitan Unincorporated Areas, Mr. Jeffrey Turner, presently in your fourth year as chairman. All five of you, both individually and collectively, will undergo my evaluation, and my evaluations will be comprehensive, detailed, meticulous, thorough, precise, on-target, and correct, complete with facts, truths, and accuracy, and all evaluations will be regular, continuous, and ongoing, and will show whether all five of you are trending up in excellence and excelling in areas that are of great importance to me and citizens of Clayton County, or whether all five of you are trending downward in decline, deficiencies, and unsatisfactory performance, and addressing and solving my concerns and issues on certain areas of Clayton County that I will bring before you. Commissioner Rooks, since you're not running for reelection and running for one of the Superior Court Judge's seats, your evaluation will take on special meaning, as you will be evaluated on your body of work, your legacy as a commissioner, and whether or not you left Commission District Number Three a better place with a better quality of life, and your responsibility to your constituents' needs, and whether or not you took definitive actions on our behalf in addressing and solving our problems, issues, and concerns. This will start at the next public commenting session at the next commission meeting. Have a great, productive, and successful rest of today's Clayton County Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Doc. Christina Cummings.
Greetings Chairman Turner and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Christina Cummings, and I currently serve as the Secretary of the Clayton County Meals on Wheels Board. Our board is committed to ensuring that no senior in Clayton County goes hungry. Based on those services that we provide, Meals on Wheels keep seniors in their homes successfully thriving. The population of older adults is expected to double by the year 2020, and one in every five persons in the world will be aged 65 or older. Currently, we only serve 140 seniors Meals on Wheels in Clayton County, although we know that that population is much larger. To give you some statistics about Meals on Wheels and what they do, 83% of our customers say that it improves their health. By having this community-based service, we keep seniors at home, thriving in their own spaces, that allows them to remain healthy. You will be happy to know that an investment in Meals on Wheels for one year, you can feed a senior, and it costs less than to have them in the hospital for one day. That is monies that would save us millions of dollars to our taxpayers, that we could invest in our infrastructure, our transportation, our education, and our economic development. So I just urge you, I want to say thank you. First, for, this is March for Meals Month. We will be investing in Meals on Wheels services, but our board works tirelessly to raise funds to supplement those costs. Budgets are your statements of priorities, so when you have an opportunity to stand up for seniors, I want you to think about those numbers and do that investing on the front hand. We appreciate the investment that the Board of Commissioners has made in Meals on Wheels and in our seniors, and we hope that in the future, you will continue to see our older adults as a priority. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you please state your county of residency for me?
Clayton County.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude public comment. The board will present three proclamations this evening. The first proclamation, Clayton County observes March 2016 as National Purchasing Month, as presented by Chairman Turner, with Ms. Deborah Brewer, along with staff.
And as we are transitioning ourselves down to take the duty proclamation, I just want to recognize a few folks. Councilmember, and I know you're here for something else, but still, in your official capacity, Councilman Tommy Smith with City of Forest Park, and we have some school member, board members here as well, Jesse Goree and Benjamin Striker, right?
Striker.
Striker, okay.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County observes March 2016 as procurement month, whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department has a significant impact on the quality, efficiency, and effectiveness of Clayton County government through its centralized procurement system. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, NIGB, as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession. And whereas, the month of March has been designated as procurement month by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, and purchasing organizations throughout the world engage in efforts during the month to inform the public about the important role performed by procurement professionals. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department has scheduled a procurement open house on March 29th, 2016, to further expand awareness of procurement functions and opportunities in Clayton County. And whereas, Clayton County Central Services and Clayton County Water Authority will jointly host a 2016 Small Business Expo on March 22nd, 2016, to encourage expanded small, local, women, and minority-owned business participation in the procurement process, provide a networking luncheon and training sessions. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2016 as procurement month in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to engage in special efforts during this month to recognize the importance of the role played by the procurement profession in business, industry, and government. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of March in the year 2016. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
The next proclamation, Clayton County observes March 2016 as March for Meals Month. Will the recipients please come forward at this time?
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County observes March 2016 as March for Meals Month, whereas, on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1962, and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas, Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month and the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, such as home-delivered meal programs which raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas, the 2016 observance of March for Meals provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, county public safety officials, local businesses, and community leaders are invited to assist with home-delivery meals as a show of program support during the month of March and throughout the year. And whereas, volunteers and program drivers for Meals on Wheels are the backbone of the program. These dedicated individuals not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and those with disabilities who are at risk of hunger and isolation daily, but also offer concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas, the Clayton County Meals on Wheels program provides nutritious meals to seniors throughout the county that help this at-risk sector of the community maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas, Meals on Wheels additionally provides a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. And whereas, our Clayton County Meals on Wheels programs and all those that are affiliated with it deserves recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make in Clayton County. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 2016 as March for Meals Month. I encourage all citizens to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National 2016 March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of March in the year 2016. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
And the final proclamation for this evening, Clayton County recognizes Jerian S. Halls as a woman making history, as presented by Commissioner Rooks. Will Ms. Halls please come forward? As well as any other guests or family that are present?
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County recognizes Jerian S. Halls as a woman making history. Whereas, since 1911, the United States of America has celebrated and highlighted the contributions of women in America, and now, March of each year is dedicated in celebration of women in history. And whereas, Clayton County, Georgia commemorates and celebrates the impact that women like Jerian S. Halls has made on this community. And whereas, Jerian Halls, a native of East St. Louis, Illinois, along with her husband and children, have called Clayton County home for nearly 20 years. Jerian has been an influential change agent and an involved, proud, and dedicated business owner in Clayton County. And whereas, in 2007, Jerian envisioned telling the remarkable story of Clayton County through positive messaging and imagery, and with a well-branded product, that vision would later come to fruition and be called We Are Clayton Magazine. And whereas, with 7,500 printed copies provided for the community without charge, We Are Clayton Magazine has an average download of 79,000 copies per issue, with an average readership of 50,000 people from around the country. And whereas, Jerian S. Halls is a leader, entrepreneur, and visionary who takes pride in her community, supporting the county by continuously pouring her heart, energy, and resources into purposefully shaping the narrative of what we love about Clayton County. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes and honors Jerian S. Halls as a woman making history for her outstanding leadership and commitment to the community. Now, therefore, I, Shayna M. Rooks, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join me in recognizing March as Women's History Month and recognizing Jerian S. Halls as a history maker for her tireless contributions of positively promoting the message of Clayton County. Through the dedication of citizens such as Jerian, our community is able to thrive, and Clayton County will always be a better place in which to live, work, and play. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of March in the year 2016. Shayna M. Rooks, Commissioner.
The board will now consider a request of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Please take them together, Ms. Brewer, unless there's one that board would like to take separately. Hearing non, please proceed.
The first is a recommendation for award for RFP 1505 Radio Frequency Identification, RFID, and Automated Material Handling AMH System for the Clayton County Library System. The recommendation for award is to the most responsive and responsible proponent meeting the specifications with the highest score, Biblioteca LLC located in North Coast, Georgia. Funding is available through 2009 SPOSS funds. The valuation tabulation summary, department recommendation, and agreement are attached for your review and information. And that is in addition for the 2009, for the SPOSS funds. The next is a recommendation for award for request for quotation 11505 for the Strategic Plan for the Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services. The recommendation is to approve an award to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder meeting specifications, the Center for Public Safety Excellence Incorporated located in Chantilly, Virginia, in the amount of $14,700. This service is to provide the fire department with a community-driven strategic plan for accreditation with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, CFAI. Funding is available through the Fire Department Other Contract Service Fees Account. The quote tabulation, department recommendation, quote summary, and agreement are attached for your review and information. The next are renewals for annual contracts, the first three being for RFPs, RFP 1365 Construction Materials Testing Inspection and Soil Boring, annual contract renewal with Nova Engineering and Environment LLC located in Kennisaw, Georgia, with a renewal period from June 1st, 2016 through May 31st, 2017. There are no remaining renewals on this contract. RFP 1376 Land Boundary and Topographical Surveys for various Clayton County projects, annual contract renewal with Falcon Design Consultants LLC located in Stockbridge, Georgia, with a renewal period from May 1st, 2016 through April 30th, 2017. There are no remaining renewals on this contract. RFP 1424 Officiating Services for Clayton County Parks and Recreation Athletic Programs, annual contract renewal with Peach State Umpires Association LLC located in Jonesboro, Georgia, with a renewal period from June 1st, 2016 through May 31st, 2017. There are no remaining renewals on this contract. The next two were with, were requests for proposals, RFP 1341 Telecommunication and Data Services, annual contract renewal with AT&amp;T Corporation located in Bedminster, New Jersey, with the new renewal period from June 1st, 2016 through May 31st, 2017. There are two remaining renewals on this contract. RFP 1407 Auditing Services for Clayton County, Georgia, annual contract renewal with Martling and Jenkins located in Macon, Georgia, with a renewal period from June 1st, 2016 through May 31st, 2017. There's one remaining renewal on this contract. The request is for you to approve the recommendations authorized to Chairman on his design need to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it, properly moved and seconded, are there any questions on any of the items?
I have one question.
Commissioner Rooks.
On the strategic plan for the fire department? Is this new, or have we had a strategic plan before?
No, ma'am. The fire department is currently in the accreditation process now, and as a part of that accreditation process, we're required to submit a strategic plan for the department. So this is to meet that requirement so that we can move forward with the accreditation process. So this is new.
This is new.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing non, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
The board will consider a request of Ramona Bibbins, Chief Financial Officer.
Please take them together.
Can we hear these separately, please?
Yeah, separately, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have one item for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment 4-69 is for 2015 SPOSS to appropriate funds from the SPOSS fund balance in the amount of $6,864,745 to provide funding for land acquisition, design, and construction of the County Information Technology Center.
Okay, is that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any questions? Hearing non, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
The board will now conduct public hearings with regards to the intent of Clayton County to abandon right-of-way. Oh, I'm sorry. Kristy Barnes.
No, ma'am, I just was getting up a little prematurely because I'm used to this being my part on the agenda, but just roll right ahead, please.
The first is to abandon approximately 0.055 acres of right-of-way formerly known as Clark Howell High as Clark Howell Highway. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in reference to this property? Mr. Chairman, hearing none. This public hearing for the first is concluded. The second is the intent of Clayton County to abandon approximately 1.231 acres of right-of-way formerly known as Flat Shoals Road. Is anyone present that wants to speak in favor or against? Hearing none, the public hearing has concluded. The third is to abandon approximately 1.61 acres of right-of-way formerly known as West Lee's Mill Road. Is there anyone present that would like to speak regarding this right-of-way? Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the three public hearings have been concluded. Kristy Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
All right, now you're on Krista. So, take them all together except for which one is that, Commissioner?
Number 48, please.
48, 2016-48, unless there's any others that a board member would like to take separately. Hearing none, please proceed.
Good evening. First is Resolution Number 2016-39, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County Parks and Recreation to accept a $1,000 donation from Walmart. The department will use the funds for program supplies and after-school snacks in the recreation centers. Resolution Number 2016-40 is a resolution to amend the Clayton County PY 2015 Annual Action Plan to allow for the recapture and reallocation of funding to establish a Special Economic Development Incentive Fund, which will be supported by funding from the Community Development Block Grant. Resolution Number 2016-41 is a resolution to amend the Clayton County PY 2014 Annual Action Plan to allow for the recapture and reallocation of funding awarded to the Home Investment Partnership Program to be transferred to the Clayton County Mortgage Assistance Program. Resolution Number 2016-42, and I hope, hopefully you all have received an updated resolution and partnership agreement, but this is a resolution authorizing the county to enter into a partnership agreement with Lake Spivey Community Incorporated to host the eighth annual, eighth annual Clayton County Parks and Recreation Lake Spivey Road Race at Clayton County International Park, and to host the second annual Lake Spivey Community Incorporated Golf Tournament at the Lake Spivey Golf Club, and to collaborate with county agencies and representatives in support of the Kids Outdoors Initiative and the Georgia Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. The road race will be held October 22, 2016, and the golf tournament will be held September 30, 2016. And the updated resolution and partnership agreement will reflect the removal of Southern Regional Medical Center Foundation as a partner to this agreement. It will just be between Clayton County and Lake Spivey Community Incorporated. Resolution Number 2016-44 is a resolution to abandon approximately 53,611 square feet of right-of-way formerly known as Flat Shoals Road. This will also authorize the conveyance of the abandonment right-of-way, of the abandoned right-of-way to the adjacent owner. Resolution Number 2016-45 is a resolution to abandon approximately 69,935 square feet of right-of-way formerly known as West Lee's Mill Road, and this will also authorize the conveyance of the abandoned right-of-way to the adjacent property owner. Resolution Number 2016-46 is a resolution to abandon approximately 2,379.95 square feet of right-of-way formerly known as Clark Howell Highway, and to authorize the conveyance of the abandoned right-of-way to the adjacent owner. Ordinance Number 2016-47 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Part II, Appendix A, zoning, Article I, basic provisions, Section 1.5 defined words, so as to insert the definition for the term building frontage, so as to modify the definition and to insert an illustration for the term freestanding sign, ground sign, so as to modify the definition for the term sign awning, so as to insert the definition for the term sign internal, and so as to insert an illustration for the term sign mansard, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Properly moved and second, any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Ordinance Number 2016-48 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Part II, Appendix A, zoning, Article 8, sign regulations, to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Part II, Appendix A, zoning, Article 9, non-conforming structures, lots, and uses, Section 9.6, non-conforming signs, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date of this, of this ordinance, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's three, two, fails.
And members of the board, I would like to request an executive session for personnel, real estate, and litigation.
Item Number 22 is the acceptance of a streetlight petition addition to existing streetlight District Lake Forest subdivision in District 3, Commissioner Rooks' district. May we have a motion?
Can I have you?
What we doing? Streetlight petition.
It does for the lack of a motion?
No.
No.
You want to make a motion first?
Yeah, let's do the motion first. Is there a motion to accept this streetlight petition?
I move that we accept the petition.
I'll second.
All right, properly moved and second, are there any questions? He's for it, right?
You're for it.
You're for it, right? Okay. All right. Hearing none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Items 20, 23, and 24 are appointments to the Department of Behavioral Health and Development of Disabilities Region 3 Advisory Council. The first is to fill the expiring term of Diana Williams. Both terms are for three years, expiring on April 2, 2019, and they are full-board appointments. Are there any nominations? Hearing none, the next is to fill the expiring term of Brenda Roberts. This is a full-board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Yes, I've spoken to Ms. Roberts, and she wishes to be reappointed, so I would like to nominate, re-nominate her.
I'll second it.
Properly moved and second, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude this evening's agenda.
Mr. Chairman and members.
If there's no further business.
I apologize if I may. My records reflect that the vote for ordinance Number 2016-48, that there was a motion to deny and a second, and that that motion to deny was approved three to two.
That's correct.
And so, that motion passed.
The motion to deny.
Yes, yes sir, I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
If there's no further business, there was a request to go into executive session for personnel, real estate, and litigation.
Is there a motion?
I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Properly moved and second, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.